All right, we're back on. All right, so you want to start all over?
I will do my best, Mr. Chair. So as I was saying, our motto is making the county better. And it is an honor to do so. And I have a very strong team to back me up. And we're all cross-trained. And I dare you to send anyone our way to say they didn't have a positive experience. I truly do. I'm very proud of the great team that we have. So just what I have provided you with here is, and things not working, but perhaps we can move on to another slide. Ladies?
Laura.
Okay. And so we don't, we have a few big ticket budget line items. So I just wanted to review with you what, what we spent out of those. And our biggest ticket line item is, is it?
Wages.
Wages are everyone's big ticket line item. Definitely so. But there's, there's a few. Professional services. We have proposed the same budget as we've had for a number of years, which is $35,000. Out of this budget line item, we perform background screenings. And so this is for all of our non-elected, non-Arizona Post positions, employees. And we also do background screenings of volunteers.
So who, who does the non-Post, I mean, the Post certified?
That would be the Sheriff's Department.
He does it? Is the Post does it too, or no?
I do not believe so. I, I believe it's an in-house situation with CCSO. And they would need to verify that.
What's interesting is, I've been seeing there's been quite a few lawsuits lately regarding law enforcement officers that have been Brady listed and go from department to department. Because in Arizona, that's like the thing, right? They jump around. And so one guy gets disciplinary actions in this Sheriff's Department and kind of gets told to quit before he gets fired. And then he leaves and goes to another one, gets in trouble again and leaves. But that record doesn't go from here to here. And then that record doesn't go to here. So he ends up getting hired by somebody else and the city or county hires, or another county hires this guy. And turns out that he's had this problem. And then he does something to somebody and they sue the living daylights out of the county and say, well, why didn't you see that this guy had this track record from this county or this city? So how do we, how do we protect ourselves from that? If, if you're not doing the background checks?
And that is that the Sheriff's Office does the background checks. And I can't speak to their backgrounds. I can speak to the backgrounds that are performed by our department or all other departments. And whenever a background screening does come back with a caution, we perform an individualized assessment on the background as per our policy and determine, how long has it been? What was the action? What is the position?
These are just criminal background checks, all right?
We also do sex offender.
Okay.
We also verify the social security number. And so that is national.
Yeah, that's, that's, what's it called? I-9 stuff, right?
That's, we perform I-9s also. And that is to verify the individual's ability to work in our country.
Right.
Because we do not sponsor anyone at this point.
As we should not.
And so that is our policy and practice.
Does it include any credit check?
It depends, sir. We do credit checks on certain positions.
Like Treasury, your Treasurer's Office or?
And, and those are a little tricky. And finance position. They're, they're a tad tricky, in my opinion. It takes a lot of judgment. Because if an individual ends up in a financial hardship, is that an indication that they would engage in an action to abscond from the organization? Not necessarily. Sometimes people have, you know, medical bills that put them in a bad place. And so they have a hard time making all the payments on time. I know that from my fiancee getting pancreatic cancer. It's like unbelievable. Any go pay. Yeah. And, and those, that person's hard time, from my perspective, is not an indication that they would engage in absconding.
But my, my experience was doing criminal background checks on people. So you're going to find multiple names, multiple social security numbers and stuff like that.
Right.
And, and that's about all we had access to that I remember was, was credit check. Because at, at the higher and more in-depth background was not in like the sensitive category, which is, I think, the clearance that I had.
Right. So we do our best to ensure also individuals who have made mistakes in their past are given an opportunity, provided it's been a long enough period of time that we're not seeing a pattern in their criminal background. And dependent upon what the crime was. Because we're talking about absconding, we're not going to put someone who was, had been charged with absconding in, in the finance office or in the clerk's office. We're going to be cautious about where the individual is going as well as all those other factors. And when I first got here, background screenings were being done somewhat sporadically. And so I'm pleased to say that I had the support of administration to establish a background screening policy that applies to everyone across the board, to include volunteers.
How about people with, I'm not good, nevermind. I was going to take a shot at somebody.
Just so you know, last fiscal year, we performed 146 screenings. And so far this year, 136. So that's where we're at with the background screening.
Or are you talking about new hires?
New hires. And also, in the policy, it states that if you are promoted to another position and it's been more than a year since you had a background screening or you changed positions, it's been more than a year, you reperform another background screening.
So eventually, perhaps, everybody would get recurrent background checks?
If, if they are moving up the ladder.
But not otherwise?
No.
You don't foresee the time when you just like, okay, your turn?
I, I would say that may be somewhat discriminatory. I would need to consult with my attorney on that one.
Okay.
And if someone behaves badly, they should be coming to us or their boss and saying, yo, I messed up. Because we eventually learn about it every day. So, but.
So there's, I was a union rep in the Board before. One of the things was random drug screening. And so I was very much against that when I was a board for a union rep. But now I'm for it. Random, you know?
And, and from my perspective and that of the law, it depends upon the position. Of course, individuals who are in safety-sensitive positions have random drug screens. And that's handled by the risk department, which I think you may have heard from today.
Which kind of employees are subject to random screenings?
Safety-sensitive. Individuals who hold commercial driver's licenses, individuals that are part of law enforcement, as well as CCOM. And who else?
Effectively, individuals who, through their job responsibilities, are in a position to harm themselves or the public based on an error in judgment. And that would fall under the, the law enforcement safety plan development. And as Jennifer said, the CDL. So in addition to our, our Sheriff's Office, of, of course, in addition to the deputies, of course, there's detention officers.
Probation. Pardon, probation?
They, I was going to mention them. However, they fall under the courts. So we're not performing the randomized screening, the post offer pre-employment screening for any judicial employees.
Who hires them? Are they hired?
They're hired through the courts.
They're hired through the court. Court's HR handles the whole process.
Do you, do you have anything do with their HR? I mean, do you do kind of?
We oversee the court's data and benefits.
We talked about combining them one time, right?
Subject coming up.
Okay, thanks.
But that's, that's what we're handling right now. They are currently 22% of our employee population. And so we make sure that their data is accurate for each and every employee and that their benefits.
Yeah, the whole court system is 22% of all county.
All of us.
Yes. And Sharon, also, pause your lines, tell me. But would something like that, like, you know, what happened and I was contacted about Justice Peace and his background?
Oh, that situation?
Yeah, that situation. Would that be something that would be benefit? I mean, that's something we can discuss.
That's something we can discuss. How, next, 620, what was that situation? I'd rather talk about that.
Okay, if I may proceed, traumatic events counseling is another expense that comes from this budget line item. This is a requirement by statute to provide law enforcement and dispatchers with counseling at no cost to them.
Do you track how many times that's used?
Yes.
What was the budget to that?
So it's included in the professional.
Under the 35K?
And we have a specific provider we utilize that specializes in law enforcement. Because this is a unique population who desire a unique skill set. And so, for example, last fiscal year, we had four sessions used. This fiscal year, so far, nine sessions have been used.
Nine?
Nine. Nine sessions. No.
It's not nine visits to the counselor?
It, it is nine counseling visits.
So roughly an hour?
I, yeah.
So out of that budget, is that like billed by the hour by the therapist?
It is. And so, for example, last fiscal year, it was $800. So far this fiscal year is $2,250. So they bill us by the hour.
Or bucks an hour?
And their rate went up recently by 50 bucks. Now it's 250 per hour. And we have a highly qualified individual with law enforcement specialists.
Are they in service now?
They are not. I believe they're in Phoenix.
And they do this by video?
Quite frankly, I am not sure.
Okay.
Are you curious?
I do know that I've had one individual travel there. I think they may be located in Tucson.
So this is do the job, right?
Correct. Correct. And there's one statute that is specifically for law enforcement and the other statute specifically for detention officers.
Can anybody else in the county use? You had a traumatic event?
That, that would, it would be through either our EAP or through the behavioral health. This is specifically required by the state of Arizona for this population.
Perhaps if my colleagues haven't thought about this stuff like I have from having been a union representative and, and on the PSPRS board and the court board, where periodically somebody retires because of a traumatic event or something like that. You have, you have two, two things at play. You have somebody, let's say you have a boss that doesn't like the employee. The employee has an event. He wants to get counseling. And the boss is going to say, no, I think you're still crazy. I, I don't want you coming back to, for work. That's, that's one thing. And then you get, on the other hand, you could say, the employee, yeah, I am still crazy. I want to retire early. So you have, you have the potential for that kind of abuse, either way.
And that's why on our employee benefit website, we have a specific form where individuals who have suffered a traumatic event, they contact HR directly. They don't go there through their supervisor. And then we inform chain of command that this is going to be happening and he will, or she will not be required to use paid time off or sick leave.
Whatever type of employees and incidents, do, can an employee bypass the chain of command, go directly to you about, like, it's got to be corruption, for instance?
Of course, fraud.
Sexual abuse or intimidation in the workplace? All that then goes straight to you, right?
Complaints like that would come directly to myself or county administration. And fortunately, we've been.
Do we have like an anonymous tip line?
For fraud.
For anything. You know, say, you know, Tom's beating me up in the parking lot after work.
There's this little box with a slot on it.
I want to tell them.
To a degree, sometimes. It's helpful if we know who's making the report. And that'll be investigation.
Yeah, anytime we have any such report, a confidential investigation is initiated by HR.
And who becomes an investigator?
Well, myself, as well as another member of my team, oftentimes Pete. That's how we handle that. And then upon completion of an investigation, we put together a, a report of findings and submit to county administration and the county attorney. So anyway, the next item that would come from this budget, I'm going to have Pete address because he has been handling our, our unemployment for a number of years. And TALCS UC Express is somewhat part of that, right, Pete?
Yeah, thank you for the handoff, boss. Yeah. In an organization that will sometimes hire as many as 200 people in a year and have as many terminations as we do, it's very useful to have an unemployment administrator in the form, in this case, in the form of TALCS. And they handle all of our unemployment claims throughout the year. And they bill us $2,250 per quarter. And I don't believe that amount has changed in a number of fiscal years. It's a pretty valuable service. In the few cases when an employee believes she, he, they, whatever, have reason to appeal to a hearing to, to question or debate a non-favorable ruling of their unemployment, TALCS provides us with a hearing representative who guides human resources and the department questions through the hearing process, through the hearing trial.
So they don't do, it says unemployment compensation. So that's not like severance packages or anything like that outside of that? So what is unemployment compensation?
So the state, someone loses their job and it's the unemployment insurance. About $240 per week, based on how many people.
They file, they have to file for unemployment. Okay.
And in most cases, in, I've, I've had experience with this in, in private sector employment where you, it's treated almost like insurance where you pay a stipend in advance and then it's adjusted at the end of the quarter based on what you use or don't use. However, government organizations pay their unemployment charges on a, basically a pay-as-you-play or as it's used basis. At the end of the quarter, we're charged for whatever, we're billed for whatever charges were incurred on our account. And TALCS also advocates for, they've been very useful through the COVID years and handling fraudulent claims. And they have got to stack a number of dollars from the state. And yeah, very useful, useful organization to have.
And then the question about PSPRS. It used to be, I think, that once a blue moon, or at least once, we called you into a PSPRS court meeting. Remember, anything would have been in this room? Okay. So since that time, it's my understanding that, that they're doing things differently where they're not bringing issues like somebody's, somebody blew out their knee, somebody went crazy, something like that. It is not coming to the PSPRS boards anymore. Are you up on that? Because I'm not.
I believe that must be the case.
Okay. You don't hear about it for many anymore?
No, not at all. And I don't know if one of the members of the board is.
The, the sitting person on PSPRS handbook? Have you seen any notifications of upcoming meetings? Okay, then the next thing you want to see is, okay, here's, here's the person. They're making their claim. They want to retire early or something like that. And that's the type of thing, it, it was, it was a fiasco because you got to get this doctor's opinion. And then the case is, oh, I don't, I don't, I don't like that doctor. I want to go to another doctor. And I don't know how long that could go, but. And then, then you get, then the board's got to make a decision. Yeah, we believe this guy. No, we don't believe this guy. And it's really hard. Okay, you might be crazy, but I'm going to take a chance.
Yeah, and with all due respect, I don't know if it's a lack of activity with the local board or just the different manner in which it's being handled.
And if I may add, I would also imagine that, much as with the traumatic event counseling, where there is statute that clearly lays out what are qualifying traumas that would allow someone to seek such counseling services? I, I think in cases that you're mentioning, there, there would be a decision chain based on, okay, this is something that falls under this. This might be more of a workman's comp. And so this would get diverted through this avenue. If something falls under these particular rules or policies, it might get diverted through a different avenue, such as through health insurance. It might start with FMLA, then ADA. It, it might go through our, our regular county employee insurance. So there are different decision points that might organize or clear something.
Exactly. And so if I could see the next slide, please. That is leases and rentals. Again, this is one of our big budget line items, which is 3,500, 35 grand, excuse me. And the main purchasing power behind this is our applicant tracking system, which is NeoGov. And the county has used NeoGov for a number of years, about eight or so.
It was implement, yeah. It was implemented, I believe it went live around October, September, October 2016.
So this is the manner in which individuals can see positions posted and they apply for positions. That's what NeoGov, part of this portion of NeoGov called Inside is. And it, for March of this year through March of next year, the cost is $21,853. Now, I was really excited when I came to the county that they use NeoGov. With my previous employer, we had an applicant tracking system that was less than optimum. And I was tasked with identifying what would be a good application, applicant tracking system for that organization. And I selected and recommended NeoGov. And I'm very pleased with them. It's, it's a very good site. And one of the things that it provides that we purchase is governmentproducts.com subscription. So anytime we post a position, it gets posted nationally. And right now, the cost of that is $3,272 a year for national exposure.
Regardless of how many applicants you put in the system? It's just the, that's the year to year.
So it, it helps us keep track of everybody and does so in a very professional manner. And we assign different hiring committees to different positions. And I'm just really pleased with it. One of the areas that we brought before the board a few years back is a background check partner integration. And the board approved our purchase of that. And what it does, it takes our candidate who has already accepted our position contingent upon completion of a background screening. We run that through the NeoGov system. It hooks up with our background screening vendor and sends them an invitation to participate in a background screening. The great thing about that is none of us get our hands on any of that super personal information. For example, when I was honored to get a job here, I came down, Pete handed me a piece of paper. I wrote down my social security number, every name I've ever used, my birthday, and I handed it back. Good thing I knew the guy and trusted him. And then we paid a huge amount for that background screening, just put it through the fax machine. So we're really pleased with this background screening integration that costs $2,525 a year. That way, we don't get our hands on it and they aren't contacted. And it's just seamless. So that's part of what happens with this 35 grand.
And were we to be continuing with the former program, it would be costing us, with as many background checks as we now perform, it would be in the tens of thousands, fours of thousands of dollars more per year. Maybe, I, I, you know, I don't know. It might even push six, six figures.
And again, it left open, the candidate's information could be compromised, which we always want to protect individuals' personal information.
So, oh, am I getting ahead of any? I'm looking at this sheet, not this sheet.
I'm just hitting the highlights for the big ones.
The Merit Commission. What, what's that? And why is it 800K?
I believe it's 300?
Is it 300? Oh, it's a, oh, that's a roll-up of everything. I'm sorry. Yeah, it's, yeah.
In the event that we would have a Merit Commission hearing, we have funds available. So I, I, I'm not sure how familiar you are with all due respect.
I'm not.
In the event that an individual would appeal a disciplinary action, they have the ability to go through a semi-judicial process.
Is this the state does this?
We do this.
Oh, we do this? So we're, we're the American?
You guys appoint. You don't have the opportunity to appoint.
So we have a former judge that oversees it for us. And they come in, the employee comes in, pleads their case. The county pleads their case. So in the event something like that would happen, then we need funds to send out certified mail and things like that. And so we haven't used that line item in a number of years. And I'm going to knock. That HR does their job right. So whenever an action comes about that could be appealed, that it is so sealed tight that it can't happen. And that's been, again, often with our track record so far, generally, my time serving in this role.
Okay, all right. That was just a mistaken impression of those 800 grand. Yeah, that's the total of all the expenses. I have $300. I'm, I'm trying to still get the spreadsheets.
Our Merit Commission is very cost-effective.
Yes, very much so. And we work very hard in conjunction with our county attorney to ensure that any, any action that an individual might be able to appeal is, yeah, it's sealed. to ensure that any, any action that an individual might be able to appeal is, yeah, it's sealed tight. Right up with the bone and that's that. There's no going back.
It, it doesn't mean that an employee will not appeal. And if they are in a position to appeal, it will be heard. However, our case should be airtight.
Yes, yes.
And so far, by golly, under Jennifer's directorship, it has been.
Making the county better. That's what we do.
Me too.
And so I love it. The largest GL you're going to see outside of wages, of course, is for unemployment insurance. And we have a proposed budget of $60,000. And keeping in mind, this is for unemployment countywide to include the courts.
That includes the courts.
It does. It does.
We don't discipline their employees, but we do pay their unemployment insurance.
So year to date, we pay $10,600.
Been diagrammed.
And so I am happy to answer any other questions you might have on our budget. I know the first year that I was here, my director asked me to view the budget and I slashed it because I, I'm, after now, it's 25 years of public service. And I believe in being good caretakers of public funds and being very prudent.
So when it comes to IGAs,
Yes.
You calculate the cost of an IG. How do, how do you go about doing that?
I would do something like that in collaboration with county administration.
I mean, you, you take a general.
No, we don't have any IGAs at this juncture.
So that's, are you referring to the lone employee agreement?
Is that, yeah, whatever.
That hasn't come before.
It, it, so that, that.
But the IGA for CCOM is, I would say, not an HR IGA. It's more of a board of supervisors countywide.
Oh, okay.
IGA.
Yeah, but I thought, I thought when we were talking to her, that the plan would be eventually she was going to privatize it to a degree and then use the county as the HR.
You're saying in that, okay. So that, in that fee for service kind of situation,
Yeah.
which we haven't final, or approached.
That's the, but I mean, so how does she do that? How do you, you add up the total number of employees and divide by whatever that number is into the salary and come up with an hour, hourly rate?
How much they spend on that particular activity. But I think there's, like we come back to the overhead report, I really want to like that we have a, a third party provide that.
Or how about if we do with the courts, right? So if you're going to do it with the courts and HR starts helping out on the courts, is there a piece of that that we can then get credit for out of the court budget? To where we can.
We'll be discussing that meeting.
Yeah, I think we've got a future date.
Yeah, I'm just trying to assign value
Right.
to, to what she's doing. So, you know, and how do, how do we recoup that value? Clearly you are a man who plays chess. No, actually, I don't play, I don't play chess. I actually, I don't play chess. I probably suck at chess. But I, I, I'm just trying to, the theme, the theme here is that, that, you know, there's obviously a lot of overlapping services within the county. And it's just trying to, trying to make sure that somebody's not double dipping. And then to make sure that those that aren't double dipping aren't getting taken advantage of.
Such as human resources.
Yeah.
And I've worked for other public entities that.
Maybe your service is $150 an hour and the IGA's got you like 25 bucks an hour. You know, that's what I'm getting at. So that we're not losing the value for the service being provided. So, you know.
And I think once we have an opportunity to examine such an IGA, we could formulate an appropriate cost per hour.
Yeah, I was just, again, I was just asking how you did, if you, I guess you haven't done it yet.
Yeah.
You won't know, yeah, so.
Exactly.
You don't know.
But we are open to continue to make the county better. All the time.
Absolutely. And I'll see this.
But I think getting to that overhead report.
No, I'm asking for $500 more, sir. I'm asking for an increase on cell phones because every year I'm moving money to pay for our cell phones. We only have two in our department. I prefer to charge money to the appropriate GL and be more accurate as opposed to, ah, don't worry about it, we'll just move that money from somewhere else later. I, I prefer not to do that. And finance directors that I've worked for over the years have preferred to budget accurately.
Sure.
And so I strive to do that. So we just, do you have any other questions on any of our other line items? We're pretty close to the bone, I think. If you want to give us anything else, bring it on.
Well, I look forward to having the IGA discussions.
Just ask you for some.
You guys can figure out what your value is.
Dental insurance, yes. Yeah, they do not offer dental insurance across the board, do they? Or do you think we have?
I think we have good dental insurance. Actually, my husband went to the dentist the other day and was told, "You have great dental insurance."
Really?
Yeah. That, that, that was the feedback from his new dentist. So.
So yeah, figure out what happened with mine when I went to get my toothbrush out.
Yeah. Perhaps it was a matter of paying the deductible.
Which is half of it. Yeah, I don't know. I have to figure out.
And one of the challenges, challenges I've had in the past, I had a dentist that was not filing claims with my insurance.
Okay.
So it may be a matter of checking with the provider to see if they did file a claim.
Thank you.
All right. Well, we appreciate your time, folks.
Thank you. Thanks for the information, especially the court personnel. Yeah, that's a staggering unit.
Do you think if you took that over, you would be able to have some of the?
The question is, what is the minimum by law we have to fund the courts?
I think that would be.
What's happening during another day?
What, what I am seeing, and this is anecdotal, it's not, I don't have the data. I'm going to get what's said. But I'm seeing a lot of overlap where I'm trying to figure out if people are taking advantage of the system to reduce the impact to their budget so they can take the money from somebody else's budget. And that frees up their budget to go do other stuff. That's what I, that's my concern. And that's what I'm, that's what I'm kind of wanting to get a feel for. And I mean, I do it in the job I am too, if I can use a different color of money to get more done in this particular area because somebody else is going to pay for something else. I mean, I'll get somebody OPM. That's what they call it, OPM, right?
I don't make experience. Anyone dipping in our budget?
No, 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 it's not, it's not in, in your budget. It's, it's a service that they would have to either have to hire somebody for and out of their budget that they don't have to hire somebody for because they leverage you
Right.
to provide that service. That's what I mean.
I have worked in other organizations where they were charged out of the budget first.
It could be under somebody else's budget to give them the service that they.
Yeah, it's just, it's just.
Yeah.
But I just, I'm getting my, my spidey senses on the back of my neck.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we're honored to.
There may not be anything there. I'm just saying, I just, I just get this funny.
We continue to be honored to serve.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Nothing at length. So and if you don't have any other questions, go ahead and we'll get back at it.
I guess we'll see you in the technical sessions. You have more work to do. It's coming up. Well, thank you very much. All right. So hang on, I got to do the, the next meeting, the next meeting. I lost, I lost track here. What do I do with it, do with it, do with it? I know the next meeting is the library district's meeting and that's at 2 o'clock.
Okay, we're coming in at under budget.
All right.